Okay, everyone, I'm gonna call it to order. Thank you for being here. I'll start tonight with a prayer, since I didn't ask anybody, I won't put you on the spot, I'll do it. Please bow, everybody. Dear Lord, thank you so very much for our blessings. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. Be with us tonight as we have to make decisions for the city of Hendersonville. Guide us, help us to do what's the right thing for the people that live here and for the city itself. Lord, watch over us during this Christmas season. Let all of us keep what's important in mind and keep that in our focus. We pray for this and everything that you bless us with. All this in Jesus' name, amen. So, public comm-- oh, I'm sorry, roll call. So, will you do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Altizer?
Here.
Evans? Hardwick? Hasty?
Here.
Kerr? Wessel? Martin? Silkwood? Slattery. That's eight present, one absent.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment, agenda items only. And we have one person on the list, her name Susan Stone. Will you come up and announce yourself? Tell us your address, too. Yeah, hold on, I'll turn that on for you. There you go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Susan Stone, and I live at 100 Coach Light Court in Hendersonville. And I live in the house that is basically to the side across the street from one of your other items under number nine in Mansker Farms, which is a setback deviation of, I guess it's 124 manor way. It's, I'm on the corner there across from me.
All right.
So, that property has actually been under construction for well over four years, if you're familiar with it. I've heard it for four entire years. And when it initially requested a variation on the setback for the backyard, I agreed that that was okay because I realized that's a steep hill that we're on. I just wanna explain that I worked for the City of Gallatin Planning Department for a while, and so I guess I just know enough to know that it's okay to ask questions and bring up things to people. But they're asking for, and I realize that this went into foreclosure, and it's been purchased by somebody else in the hopes that all these changes will be approved after the fact. But I don't agree that that's okay. The rest of us who built on those hills knew what the rules were, and we followed the rules, and we built on the area that we were allowed to build on. And that house is huge, and the yard is not attractive at all, the way they have it, all the work done on it. And I guess I will just add, I have a picture that I took from the inside of my house while the house was actually under construction. This has to do with codes, not planning. But when they originally poured the foundation for it, it was poured concrete. And then that builder had put the property over the line. And so when it was inspected at some point, somebody finally said, "Okay, you're over too far, you can't build the house this big." So they cut it off, and they built that side, rebuilt that side with cinder block. And I have a picture from the inside of my house, which is like 200 to 300 feet away from that house, where the front poured concrete and the cinder block, they're not even attached. And you can see that there's a gap between the front and the side, sorry about that, from my house. So, I don't know why codes didn't catch that when they inspected it again. But that would also be something that should be concerning, about the safety of that house. But again, I did initially say that I agreed with the setbacks, the requests that they made to make that a variance. I don't agree with the setback request that they're requesting now. I've lived there for six years, and it's been under construction for over four. You have any questions for me?
No, ma'am. Thank you. Was there anybody else that came to speak that didn't get the opportunity? All right, thank you, we'll move on. Next is the acceptance of the agenda, and I need to make sure everybody's aware on the acceptance. We're going to have this deferral issue. The deferral is related to, let me see. It is number eight development plans on our item, or on our agenda. The people are stuck with either snowstorms, and their lead person is also having some health issues, so they're not gonna be able to speak, or be here tonight to talk to us about it. So I'm going to, I guess we need to have a motion to take this from the agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, we could just, one of the things, Mr. Chairman, we could do if the commission approves, is in accepting the agenda, is noting that that item would be deferred until the January Planning Commission meeting, at the request of the applicant.
Right. So if anybody will offer the motion, I would appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? Can I do this? Okay. So all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you, it passes. Next is the minutes from last month, November 4th. I'm sure everyone has had time to read through that. Do I have a motion to accept? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you, that passes. All right, next we're on the consent agenda. So we will, all of these have been accepted by our motion. All of them have been agreed to by the applicants, there's nothing outstanding. So we can agree to group these and accept them as a single motion, and move on, or do any of you have discussion points? Oh, I'm sorry, Barry.
I don't wanna take it off, I just have a couple of questions.
You go right ahead.
The Valley Creek subdivision? I'm assuming all the flooding over there, do those lots typically flood, or they, how does that work?
I will let Public Works address that. This actually, at that intersection, is that intersection that we're doing that major transportation improvement project of the whole intersection? So there is flooding issues. I believe these particular, where the houses are being constructed are out of the floodplain, but I'll let Trey address that.
Before you answer that, I know at some point that area, the road is gonna need to be widened, and are there setbacks in here that will allow that to happen? And that's the only question that I had.
So to answer your last question first, the property lines you see do reflect the acquired right-of-way. The right-of-way that was acquired for that intersection improvement that Director Free referred to. With that project, the intersection will be raised a few feet. So as part of that, we've had to do, go through the clomer process where we revised the floodplain mapping in that area. So a small portion of Lot 1 will remain in Zone AE, one of the floodplain hazard zones. But for the most part, it's being raised out of the floodplain.
And the other piece, that's an old farm-to-market road through there, so I'm assuming at some point it's gonna get widened and brought up to today's road standards with curb and gutter, et cetera. Do we have easements in there for all of that to happen? And are we required to have that?
Are you referring to Stop 30 Road?
Uh, yes.
That's part of the improvement.
I believe a portion of that road will be widened. I do not recall how they're handling drainage in that plan, but I can assure you that's been accounted for.
Okay.
Any other commissioners? I'm sorry, go ahead, Todd.
So I've got a couple of questions. I live really close to this, so I mean, I'm talking about quarter of a mile close to this. So I know, I know what, how it floods, and what it looks like, how often it does flood. And I hear you on the flood study and all that. But when I look at this roundabout at the end of the road, and maybe it's just the way it's designed, that looks pretty close to the edge of the existing road. And if my memory serves me correctly, that water gets up in that area when it floods, from Drake's Creek. So is that just a design, when I look at the plat here, is it just close because it's drawn that way? Or is it gonna be that close to the edge of Drake's Creek Road?
It likely will be pretty close, if not right up in the floodplain area. These, each of these lots will be required to have a minimum FFE, a finished floor elevation, that is set two feet above the mapped floodplain elevation in that area. And then that road will be privately maintained as well.
What standards, when you say privately maintained, what standards are they, do they have to meet if it's a privately maintained road? Or do they have any standards?
They still have to meet Hendersonville road standards.
Okay. Second, maybe second or third question, actually. That area between Stop 30 and that new, I guess subdivision-only road, that area there, what is gonna go there? Is it existing?
So there is--
Are you gonna put trees, or what?
Well, there is an existing stream that is gonna be rerouted as part of that intersection improvement process. It'll actually be restored and rerouted. There will be some native plantings, kind of in the stream buffer area. But that is largely out of their limits of the property.
That stream is dry about three-quarters of the year, so there's not much water there. And it's only runoff water when it is. So I guess just the look from Stop 30 to that small section between that and that new road, I mean, is there gonna be any required, other than the buildup and all that, any required landscaping, any required changes or additions to the greenery, the trees, anything?
No, sir, not with this project.
I mean, what happened? Who maintains that piece of property?
That is in the City of Hendersonville right-of-way. Now it is.
And how wide is that?
It varies. There's not a constant width.
Give me a range.
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I can look into that for you.
Okay. And then last question. This, going on to, I guess at Spear Point, that section, as I read the plan, is part of that, or big section of that is in TVA property, or?
There is, they will need to get concurrence with TV, with the TVA, to make sure that what they're planning to do in that easement is okay with them. And as you can see, the biddable area of that lot is not within that TVA easement.
Got it. What is that gonna look like? That corner that's gonna be sectioned off?
We can't really say at this time with any certainty. You know, that may be a better question for the developer.
Are they here? Do you mind?
Hi, CJ Merle with 615 Design Group, representing the developer. To answer your question with TVA, Trey has right, we will have to go through a review and approval process with them, which is through the form of a submittal online through their portal. Really, the main thing, you can, we can plant it, we can put landscaping in it, we can, we just can't put any buildings or structures in TVA easement. So at this time, with this just being a preliminary plat and not construction documents, we don't have, it's not a requirement to show necessarily anything there, but with it being the front of the subdivision that they pull in, likely there will be some form of landscaping placed there.
And that's, who maintains that, Hendersonville?
That wouldn't know. That would be, that is on property, so it'd be either the owner of the lot, or if it's in common open space, it would be the HOA.
Okay, so there is gonna be an HOA?
Yeah, we have, we have to have one. Because there's gonna be a common stormwater. So you asked a question earlier about what happens between that road and our property line. We have plans to put a, what's called a water quality swale in between there to act as our stormwater treatment area. And that'll have various plantings in it and whatnot, between the proposed access drive and the property line. And then, as Trey mentioned, as part of the widening project of Stop 30 and the intersection, they are gonna be rerouting the stream, and then there is proposed plantings that occur back in the buffer on the north side of the stream.
Where would you reroute that stream?
It's all gonna, it's basically gonna be dependent on the construction documents that they have in place for the road. Ultimately, it's gonna come down to tiebacks from the proposed edge of pavement back to the top of bank of the stream. With the widening, it's gonna be too close to the stream, so they have to just shift the stream over a little bit. There's enough fall from Spear Point to where they're going under Drake's Creek. But it is gonna be a fairly extensive improvement to that intersection and the roadway.
Got it, got it. That's helpful, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Don't leave yet.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, then. So you being the developer, I'm assuming you would know what is planning to happen to Stop 30 Road? And how far back is it gonna be widened? Because I am truly concerned that that road, is all of those farms back there, over the next 10, 15, 20 years get developed? That road's gonna need to be a true modern road, not a farm-to-market road. It's gonna need left-turn lanes, and it's gonna need a lot of improvement. And is there enough room between what's there and your road for all of that to happen? Because that's gonna be a big improvement when that road has to be brought up to today's standards.
Yeah, understood. So to answer your question, there has already been construction documents created for the widening of Stop 30 at this intersection. And back to, pretty much, the improvement that occurs here at the intersection and the widening of Stop Road, pretty much goes all the way to Spear Point Road, or Spear Point Drive. Any widening further east, I am not aware of that at this time. I know, I know over time, it will likely widen, yes. But there has already been right-of-way taken from this property to go towards that improvement plan for the city. And I believe, Trey kept me from wrong, but they're also working with TDOT as well on that improvement plan for the intersection.
So do we know, I assume if construction drawings have been done, what is the widening gonna look like? I mean, is it gonna have turn lanes? Is, what is all that gonna look like? And again, I love the project, I wanna see you do the project. I just wanna make sure we have plenty of room for that road today, as well as 10 or 20 years in the future.
Understood.
So, you know, currently, to preface my answer a little bit, we get a lot of complaints about extended wait times at the intersection. And a lot of that is due to the intersection geometry. It's such a small intersection, and there's so many demand for the different turn movements, that the opposing left-turn lanes cannot be activated at the same time. So what this is doing is it's widening that intersection extensively, and that's gonna leave room for, I believe, a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane on that Stop 30 approach. And then I think there's gonna be some lane shifts that accompany that. So it's, as CJ said, it's a pretty substantial improvement.
Yeah, the improvement at the intersection is very significant.
So what I'm hearing is that if you're on Stop 30 and you're going onto Drake's Creek, there's gonna be at least three lanes there allowed to ride, is--
Actually, I think it might be four.
Crossing Drake's Creek and continuing onto Stop 30.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Another question.
Go ahead.
So this is for staff, quick question, and I know this is a preliminary reading of this. And I've got concerns about the flood part of this. I'd like to see that actual study, and I know, you know, we'll see something, but I wanted to get a commitment that we'll see a comprehensive review of the flood concerns there.
Yeah, that will happen. This is the preliminary, so other than what the city's already done for that intersection, all of the engineering that'll be done on this will be, once the preliminary plat is approved, then they'll do the construction plans, and the construction plans don't go to the Planning Commission. We handle those with staff, and as far as the drainage and all of that engineering stuff, that'll be something that Public Works will look at. Then, once they complete their construction plans, which checks all those boxes off about flooding and all of that--
So we'll be in a position the next time we see it to--
Yeah, you'll see it--
--understand and ask more questions.
You'll see it at the final plat.
Gotcha.
And when it, they can't submit a final plat until we've approved the construction plans. So by the time the final plat comes to this body, all those things will have been done.
Gotcha, thank you.
And all those questions should be able to be answered at that time. And sometimes, sometimes, it may not happen with this, but sometimes the preliminary plat may lay this out like this, but then when they do the actual engineering, they find, uh, you know, we've got some things to overcome, and we might not be able to yield as many lots, or something's gonna have to move. So oftentimes, that does happen, in between the preliminary plat and the final plat. And this piece of property, I'll just, you know, remind the Planning Commission, this is something here over the last year and a half that we looked at on this whole Stop 30 Future Land Use Plan. So this area, what's happening here, even though, you know, it's understandable that it's like, uh, is that really, you know, looking at it as you see it, as it's developing, it is acre lots, but, you know, the way it kind of is laid out there, you know, might make you kind of pause. But we have been through the process that, you know, from a community standpoint, the future land use, you know, has been identified as this versus office or some kind of small commercial, or something of that nature. And so this is, this is what it's ended up yielding. But they are acre lots. And one of the reasons for the roadway in the front, the way that it is, is that the staff with the road and major road improvement we're doing at that intersection, were not comfortable with allowing individual driveways off of Stop 30. And so that's kind of the way that it's lining up there now. And typically, where we've worked out for them to have that access that close to Spear Point, I mean, typically, we might not necessarily allow that to be that close, but the trade-off, so that we don't have anything coming off of Stop 30, is kind of trying to do the balance there, as Public Works is, you know, looking at where those things can be allowed to. But I just kind of wanted to share that, because we've looked at this area here pretty intensely over the last couple of years, trying to envision what the future is gonna be for the area.
Any other commissioners have questions, comments? You also have a second agenda item on the consent agenda. Any questions, or anything about Curtis Crossroads final plat? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, we'll do this by electronic.
Motion to approve, pass with eight yeses.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item is the concept plan by Hendersonville Parks, 2025 LPRF Grant Concept Plan. Owner: City of Hendersonville. Location: It's multiple spots, and the leading, lead planning person is Timothy. You want to tell us about that?
Thank you, Chairman. So this is a similar request to one that y'all saw late last year, beginning of this year, I believe, for a grant, LPRF grant for, I believe it was for Heritage Park. And the reason this is coming before y'all, as in the Heritage Park Concept Plan, is in order to apply for these grants, one of the particular grant requirements is that the Planning Commission has approved the plan. So this is a set of plans, I believe it's six different areas within our park systems, with a range of improvements. That'll be the subject of the grant application, and those improvements range from repaving, improving parking lots, replacing bathrooms, restrooms, concession facilities, turf infields for the ball fields. So a lot of different projects that will represent significant improvements to our park system. And Andy Gilli, the Parks Director, is here to answer any particular questions you may have about these projects.
Thank you, Timothy. Director Gilli, would you like to come up and tell us about it? Or share any insight?
Can. Or I can answer questions, however you'd like me to do.
You, does anybody up here have a direct question?
I can read you the list if you want me to.
They were flashing it up here in front of us.
Okay.
So I think everybody's had a chance here to see it. Anything, any comments? You wanna brag about anything, Gil?
I mean--
You've done a great job with the parks. Our park system's awesome, so.
We were, we're one of the few cities in the state to have two of these grants open at the same time. And this round, they open up rounds of these things every year, that the governor has funded it. And this round, we got the most money for 2025, 3.5 million, I think, is the number. Of most pertinence to you, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna replace that concession stand at the main quad at Drake's Creek Park. That actually was paid for 50 years ago by an LPRF grant. That's how long it's been there, so that's one of them. We're gonna do some more paving at Drake's Creek Park. We're gonna put an inclusive playground at Sanders Ferry Park, the first one at the top when you come in to the right. And just so everybody understands, when we talk about these inclusive playgrounds, Mary's Magical Place cost $1.6 million in 2018. We're budgeting around $750,000 for one in 2025. So I want everybody to understand, this is not gonna be Mary's Place at Heritage Park or at Sanders Ferry, but it's gonna be a place where anybody that's in a wheelchair can come and enjoy the park, or people with sensory issues can come and have a playground that they can go to that's not Mary's. Mary's is like Yogi Bear, I said, it's so crowded, nobody goes there sometimes. We're gonna update our Parks Master Plan, we're gonna pave all of Veterans Park, which if you've been there recently for Pig Fest, or any of our other ballgames or anything that is in dire need of paving. We're gonna pave the rugby parking lot, which is something that we committed to do. When we, when this commission approved the rugby fields, the city committed to paving the parking lot a few years ago. Well, now we're gonna fulfill that. And we're gonna, I think you saw that picture, we're gonna replace the boat dock and ramp at Mallard Point. It will not be to the scale of Sanders Ferry that we have right now, but it is a much-needed improvement, and paving there at Mallard Point is much-needed. There are a few projects that were not in the scope of the grant that we're doing with the sales tax money, such as LED lights and turf fields. So we're blessed to be able to get this money. Thanks to you all for always approving these plans, and our Board of Mayor and Alderman for funding them. And then we have, I can, since I'm on TV for just a second, for 12 people that are watching, we have a great elected delegation that has really supported these grant applications all the way to the governor's desk. So that, I don't know that everybody understands how critical those relationships are as we apply for these things. So appreciate y'all giving this consideration. It is part of the requirement, you have to bless the scope of all these projects. Really, probably the only one that might come back before you all is the concession stand project. I don't think repaving a parking lot or replacing the boat ramp is gonna necessarily come back here, so.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Director Gilli, is there anything beyond the scope of what we have here? Is there anything that's come up since you had submitted this that you'd like to include as well?
No, sir, not at this time. What we've applied for and what we got is kind of, that's what we're getting at this point. And I, like I said, I do think the concession stand is a rebuild, but we may do some things out in that little area that may require to come back here. And I think y'all will probably wanna bless the materials that we use and the other things that we do at that site. But we're gonna probably have to use the same footprint, because it's up on a hill, and we don't wanna change that.
Commissioner Silkwood, you have questions?
Yes, thank you for being here tonight, and I just wanted to say congrats on getting the grant. All these projects are really much-needed in our park system. And I know you and your staff work really hard on all of this, so I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes, and thank you. That's a big win for the city.
Yes, sir.
On the rugby field, you said you're gonna pave the parking lot, and I go out there quite a bit. I've got a grandson that's out there a lot. And there's a makeshift parking lot on the back side, it's all grass.
Correct.
Does that include that?
No, sir.
It does not.
No, sir, not at this time. This is just paving the entry drive and the current parking lot.
The gravel part of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Is there-- Is there, is it, just a question for me, educate me. Is that a, a parking lot that we technically can use, the grass part of it? I mean, is it, I know we're going in, it's always sunken, it's got a lot of water, mud and all that, but a- any thought about building that small area up where you come in and out off Drake's Creek Road? Or that's not Drake's Creek?
I think part of this grant in the master planning part of it, you will see kind of a overall site master plan, not a site plan, but a master plan for the property across the creek and maybe this little area. Um, in the past, we've talked about hopefully one day using that for practice fields. Uh, we didn't, we're right now having to use it for overflow parking. Um, we were kind of hoping one day that when the, the Avent property developed, that we would get more parking, which would allow us to not park in this little area. But I don't know that that development's going to happen and then we'll get part of that. So that's kind of obviously influx. Y'all have dealt with that proposal here and at the BOMA level also. Um, so for now, we're probably just going to park in the grass.
Gotcha.
Um, that's in a floodplain also. So adding asphalt to that could be a, that's above my pay grade a little bit, but that could be a tricky proposition also.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. All right. I'll entertain a motion. Do I hear? I have a motion. Do I have a second? All right. We'll do this one electronically.
Motion to approve, pass with eight yeses.
Thank you, Zach. All right. Next on the agenda is the development plans, TBM Millennium cottages. We agreed to pull that off at the, uh, request of the applicant and it will be deferred till next month, all likelihood. All right. So now we'll skip down to number nine on the agenda item. It is Cherokee Woods, section six, lot twelve, setback deviation, final plat. Owner, John Collins. Location, one twelve Lake Terrace Drive. Lead planning is Zachary Coleman. Would you like to tell us about it?
Yes, sir. Um, so the applicant, uh, Botzko Builder, Inc., on behalf of the property owner, has requested a setback deviation to allow the construction of a new home on the property, uh, to replace an existing home damaged by fire. Uh, the approximately point six four acre property is located at one twelve Lake Terrace Drive in the Cherokee Woods subdivision, uh, which is zoned, uh, SR one. Uh, the current zoning in SR one calls for a thirty foot minimum front setback while the property is platted currently for a sixty foot front setback. Uh, the applicant is requesting a deviation of ten feet from the platted setback to allow for a fifty foot front setback. That's it.
That's it. Pretty good and dry.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, anyone?
I might explain something.
Okay. Director Free?
Yeah. I kind of want to explain with this one and I'll explain with the next one as well. Uh, this one, uh, we haven't had a lot of setback deviations. We have here, uh, over the last year had a few of these, but I just wanted to remind the, uh, planning commission that, uh, typically variances go before our board of zoning appeals. Uh, but what we realized a few years ago, uh, is that, is that the board of zoning appeals, uh, is appealing things that are within the zoning ordinance. But to appeal something that's within the subdivision regulations, it has to come before the planning commission. And then that's why this is. So if, in this instance here, the, the zoning setback is thirty feet, but the platted setback is sixty feet. So any reduction into that sixty foot that doesn't get to thirty comes to the planning commission. But if they were asking for, uh, a reduction from the thirty foot setback to like twenty-eight foot or something, then that would go to the board of zoning appeals. So it's, it's kind of confusing, but I just wanted to, to clarify that, uh, because sometimes you'll be looking at this and thinking, why, why didn't this go to the board of zoning appeals for a variance? Because what, why are we calling a deviation? So I just kind of wanted to explain that to the planning commission.
All right. And just to make sure everybody knows, the Adlin agreed to everything. So any questions from anyone other than that, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion. We have a second? We have a second. Uh, we'll do this by electronic vote also.
Motion to approve, pass with eight yeses.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Mansker Farms, phase eighteen, set, uh, section one, setback deviation, final plat. Owner, John Wilkinson. Location, one twenty-four Manor Way, parcel eleven forty-four IN zero two zero point oh oh. And this one is Caitlin's.
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant, Wilson Bank and Trust, is requesting multiple deviations for the property located at one twenty-four Manor Way. Uh, the parcel is part of the Mansker Farms, uh, plan development, phase eighteen, section one. The Mansker Farms plan development has a required minimum building setback, uh, of thirty in the front, five on the side and ten in the rear, and a required maximum lot coverage allowance of thirty percent. The lot coverage is a portion of the lot that is occupied by strictly buildings or structures, including accessory structures expressed as a percentage of the total lot area. The properties to the west and the south of the proj- subject parcel are currently undeveloped. To the east, the property falls within phase nineteen, section one A of the Mansker Farms, uh, development, which is actively under construction. Immediately beyond this property to the east, the area along the road is designated as open space. Just to give a little bit of history, this property did go to the board of zoning appeals, um, in twenty twenty-one under the original owner and builder. Um, and the bank, who is now the current owner, is trying to rectify some of the construction errors that were made by the previous owner. Some of the variances that the BZA granted were a variance reducing the rear building setback from ten feet to nine, seven point nine feet for the main residence. A, the next variance was reducing the setback for retaining wall over five feet tall, from five feet to one foot, with the stipulation that the footers could not trespass onto an adjacent property. The other, the last variance that rose, requested and received was increasing the maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to thirty-eight percent. Since twenty twenty-one, as the director mentioned, um, staff has determined that since the property lies within a plan development, it, any further changes or deviations is required to come before you, um, and be approved by the planning commission. As you can see on the screen, the existing conditions of the property. Um, the first deviation that is being requested is the front setback, and that is to allow the front building wall to encroach one point eight feet over the required front setback of thirty feet, which would make the new front setback twenty-eight point two. The second setback encroachment would be to the right side to allow the right building wall to encroach point two three feet, which would make the setback four point seven seven feet. The rear setback would be the requesting the rear setback to be changed, um, to encroach one point nine feet over the previously amended rear setback of seven point nine by the board of zoning appeals, which would establish the new building setback of six feet for the rear. The next, the accessory encroachments, you have the HVAC unit, which per the zoning ordinance is allowed to encroach up to seventy percent. Um, seventy percent would have, of the required five foot setback would be three and a half feet. The new encroachment for the HVAC would be at eighty percent with one foot from the property line. The retaining wall, um, in the, in the front, um, the, they're requesting to allow a retaining wall over five feet in height to be placed along the property line and the driveway, which is being reconstructed, um, instead of the five foot separation distance that's required by the zoning ordinance. Um, the applicant has provided two waiver requests documentation. On the lot coverage, the Mansker Farm has the lot coverage percentage at thirty percent. They were granted thirty-eight percent by the board of zoning appeals. They are currently at forty percent. So they are requesting a two percent variance as well for the increase. See. They will be required to, uh, re, on when they correct the driveway, they'll have to remove the existing driveway and reestablish curb and sidewalk. And I believe that's all I have.
That was a mouthful, Caitlin. That was a lot. All right. So planning commissioners, any questions? I'm sure there are some. And if you would like, we can get the applicant up here if you want to ask them in particular, what's your desires. Applicant, go ahead and step up if you don't mind.
My name's Zach Wilkinson with Cornerstone Development Services. Um, like Caitlin said, there's a lot going on with this.
There's a lot going on with this.
Um, not, to not get too far in the weeds with the history, where we're at at this point, everything out there is, is built. Um, the bank has employed us to come up with a plan to try to alleviate as many of the, uh, issues that there are. And so we have submitted a, a essentially a site planning grading plan where we're going to be revising the existing driveway, tearing out, out some of the existing walls and, and removing as many of the encroachments, um, that we can. There is a rear wall that's actually over the property line. Removing that, really locating that to where it meets, um, the zoning standards. And so the items, believe it or not, there's even more issues than were mentioned and, or that, that are being requested. Uh, but we are, the plan that we've put together addresses many of those items, but the ones that we are requesting a, uh, not a variance, but a, uh, deviation on are the ones listed, um, tonight. And the reason, and we can go through individually to one of those while we, uh, are requesting those deviations rather than, it, they're, they're not simple fixes. And we feel like by fixing them, we will actually probably make the end product of that house a less desirable product for the whole neighborhood. Um, so our goal is tonight, and the bank's goal is, um, as Ms. Stone mentioned earlier, this thing's been going on for a long time. Um, the neighborhood has expressed lots of, uh, understandably, uh, unhappiness over just the length that this thing's been strung out. Um, I want to reiterate, the parties that are involved now had nothing to do with what was built. Um, so we're just in here trying to clean it up and take care of it as quickly. Um, and not, not necessarily quickly, but trying to do it in a way that the finished product is, um, aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood and that, that we can, um, given all of the existing kind of constraints and circumstances that are out there. Um, be happy to answer any questions over any of those specific requests, uh, and answer them to the best that I can.
Commissioner Hasty?
Looked like somebody just tried to overbuild on a lot. And instead of asking permission, you're really asking for forgiveness, right?
Yes, sir. Definitely. They, they not only overbuilt, but they did not build, um, very well. As far as, they obviously didn't get surveyed. They're, they, they got outside of their setbacks. So yes, yeah, there's no arguing with that.
Yeah, and I, I, I wish Beth Longmire was here, she could give you a good lesson in asking for variances. You know, we got rules for a reason. And, uh, the gentleman in Cherokee, he at least asked on the front end. You know, it'd been good if we could have gotten some of these issues resolved on the front end. The board of zoning appeals has already done you a favor. You know, and I think tearing it down, starting over is probably a waste. But my biggest question is, what kind of assurance can the neighborhood have if we grant these deviations that you're not going to be back here four years, four, four more years, still digging and scooting, tearing up concrete, pouring concrete? You know, if we're going to fix it, we need to get it done to the benefit of these neighbors. Timely and in an aesth- aesthetically manner, kind of assurance can we get that that'll happen?
Um, of course, me personally, I cannot give that assurance. I can tell you, it is a new owner and the, the current owner, which is the bank, uh, it is now their property, uh, not by their desire necessarily, but it is their problem to fix. And I can tell you, the conversations I've had with them, they've been, they want to do whatever they can to just get this thing fixed in the way as correctly, if that's possible, um, that they can.
You say they, that's the bank?
Yes, sir. The, 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 uh, the per, the owner, that previous owner that did all this is no longer in the picture. Um.
Well, the bank's not going to do anything until they sell it.
Well, I don't, they, I think they're in the position, they don't feel like they can sell it unless they correct. I think there's been a lot of conversations with city staff, um, and everybody's very well aware that, because nobody's lived in this house yet. Um, there's not been a CO issued, is, that I'm aware. So before they can sell it, they got to get a CO. And it's my understanding, city's probably not going to issue a CO until this stuff is cleaned up. So I guess the assurance that nothing else, um, that will, will be done that's outside of, uh, what's approved is that the city's not going to issue a CO at, at that point. Um, this, this thing's on everybody's radar. It would be the other-
And I understand you're working for a client. You didn't create this monstrosity. But, uh, I mean, I don't know what you do to fix the mess, other than maybe go ahead and say, all right, we'll grant you a few, but we want some assurance that it's going to get fixed. And the bank's not going to sit on it there for two more years until they get somebody that's willing to put enough money in it to fix it, that they can get their money out of it. So.
I will say they have employed a general contractor that I'm working with closely as we put together this proposed kind of redesign. Um, so I think that hopefully shows that they're serious about doing something. They've already employed the general contractor to fix it. It's just a matter of, they're not going to do anything else until they get the, the proper approvals, um.
Is there a vehicle where we can put a time limit on our approval? Probably not, but.
Probably not. Yeah. Yeah, prob- prob- probably not. I don't know that we can condition the deviation. No, I don't, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe we could, that I, that I'm aware of. Are you, Timothy? I'm, I'm not aware of that. Okay.
The bank would be open to that, I believe, if that, but I know that there's limitations on what you can actually require.
Commissioner Kerr, do you have questions?
Yeah. Similar to, uh, Commissioner Hasty, and it's, I mean, you look at this laundry list of things. I mean, it's, it's a lot. I mean, and I would hate to be a neighbor out there having to look at this every day. Um, so in terms of the assurance question, and I know you're not in a position to give that, would the bank or representative of the bank, um, would they be in a position to, to give this commission an assurance? And the second part of the question that Commissioner Hasty said is, can we get, you know, some of them done? I mean, in my opinion, we need to get them all done. Um, but, and, and the way I kind of look at this is, is there a most critical and a least critical deviation that we can start to look and understand how critical those are? I'm not a builder, right? I'm CPA by trade, so I, I don't build. Um, but I look at the numbers. It, it seems to me that we've got so many that we need to understand the real important ones and the ones that are minor deviations that can be taken care of. And the citizen that talked about the, the difference in a retaining, that's a problem to me. I, it's a structural problem. Um, so I'm not, I'm not going to be able to support this tonight in, in its current form, but I would like to understand, um, some type of report that shows us how critical some are. And, and then secondly, uh, the assurance that Commissioner Hasty talked about, you can't give it, and unless I hear it, I don't- you can't give it, and unless I hear it, I don't know that I could vote for it. So that's more of a question for the chairman and how we look at this. I think, do we want to give him some time to go back and sharpen his pencil a little bit? Get the bank involved to give some assurances?
Well.
And that's a question, so.
Well, I'm going to, and Caitlin, I don't want to speak for you, but in looking at what your summary is of this, most of this is done and they're just basically asking for forgiveness, correct?
Some of the work has not been done, so the.
But most of these encroachments.
The encroachments, yes. They have been, they have been done, yes.
And you can't undo it unless you pull the house, the building, or the structures out.
Correct.
So that answers one of your questions, Todd. Okay, so then the next thing, and that's sort of hitting on what Charles said, if we don't agree to it, then their other alternative is pretty much it'll just stand there like a ghost building or tear it down. So, and when I was told about this, I asked the question, is this a teardown? Because that's, I didn't see many other alternatives other than we grant these allowances. Now, the thing is, how marketable, how sellable is it? You know, you've got a lot of structure taking up most of the property.
But if it's just going to stand there, I mean, we've done nothing to improve the process.
Understood.
We've just rubber stamped it. And so to me, there's got to be some enforcement, some, not punitive's not the right word, but you can't come back and just ask for forgiveness if you didn't ask for permission. I mean, and I know Mr. Hasty's an architect, he's done this before. I would tear it down and start over if it were me, but that's just me. But I, I hear you, and some of that's been done. But I still don't understand, you know, how it's going to fix the problem if you've encroached and you can't fix some of these variances. And I don't understand how critical some of those are versus how uncritical or non-critical they are. That's Caitlin, maybe you and I can work offline on that, you can update me on that. I'm happy to do a three-way with you guys so you can educate me. But, and again, I just, I just understand, I'm looking at this from, not just you, but from the neighbor's perspective that has to see this. And I'm, I, you know, I'm late on this project because I have, this is the first time I've seen it. But I am a little bit disturbed about where we are and how many of these things. And it's not something that I think you would disagree with. So I'm still asking for a way to add some assurance that even if some of the encroachments have been baked into this, can they be rectified to a way that it go back to where it was before, where it should be? And I haven't heard a good answer for that.
Sure. If, I'll try to hopefully address a lot of that. As far as the, kind of the priority or which encroachment or which request are priority, as it stands right now, there are a laundry list of other encroachments that are in violation. The, the proposed plan we've put together eliminates a lot of them. These were the remaining ones that we couldn't really work away around without tearing down the structure essentially. The only exception to that essentially would be, I think there's a, there's one for the HVAC. That could theoretically, I think, be replumbed and shifted to the house or a different unit. Place that, because it's, it's point, less than half a foot over the setback line or the, the line that it needs to be. And that theoretically could probably be addressed without tearing down the house. The, all of the others except, with the exception of, so that it's exception number five, the retaining wall. That, that is an exception request that is, has not been built. So there's existing retaining walls that are over. We're going to tear them all out, tear out the existing driveway and then rebuild the driveway in a fashion that what we've proposed. Where the grade, because right now you can't pull a sedan into the driveway without dragging, the way it's built. So we've regraded it, or put together a plan to regrade it and build that driveway along with essentially retaining walls along that driveway to make it where it's a functional driveway for somebody. That number five exception request includes us building a driveway, or I'm sorry, retaining wall right against the southwestern property line. We might be able to design it in a way that it doesn't, because I believe if it's less than, if it's over five foot high, it can't, it has to be less than half the setback width, is that right? And so we might be able to design around that. Essentially, we'd be making the driveway skinnier. Right now, it's shown as a 16-foot wide driveway. We could narrow that down theoretically, I guess, and make it where that was not an exception request. I don't know from a functionality and from a, that in theory could be done. I think the end product will be less desirable, but ultimately that would take care of one of those exception requests. All of the others, without tearing down the house, there's no way to really address them. Or literally chipping, cutting a couple foot off the house, yeah. As far as the assurance from the, from the bank, I think they would be open to a timeline. I don't know if a conditional approval or an approval conditioned upon the work being done within a certain time period, if that's even an option. I know they're wanting to do something. They're not wanting to kind of kick the can down the road with a deferral or, you know, or, and, but again, I can't. If there is a way to approve it with the condition that, hey, y'all have eight months to address this or whatever, we would, I think, we would be open to that.
Hold those thoughts right there because Commissioner Evans has been waiting and I wanted him to ask you these questions. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Should we decide to approve the changes that they're talking about? With respect to assurances of the timeline, I can assure you that somebody has lost a bunch of money on this thing. And somebody is losing money every day this goes on by. And having had experiences with banks in the past, I understand the time value of money. And I understand that nobody wants to get this finished quicker than the bank does. So if we put a timeline on, I don't know that the bank could guarantee that timeline, even if we did put it on. I don't know that a contractor could. But we do have contractors, architects, and builders all over this thing who want to get the project finished. And within the constraints of getting it finished as soon as possible, I, I don't see why anybody would drag their feet on this at this point. I, I see new owners and somebody that's trying to correct the problem to get out from under it. I certainly would be. And there's no way money is going to be made on this project by tearing it down and starting again. Somebody's going to redouble their losses again. So I, I don't see that as a way to go. I get irritated every time we have one of these. And we have one quite often where somebody's violated the rules, but the people that are involved in this now are just trying to clean up the mess. So I believe that, I believe that all the impetus in the world will be put on by the bank to get this finished as soon as possible. It would, it would be if I were the bank president, believe me.
Understood. Commissioner Frey, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, that's okay. I just wanted to mention that on these issues with the retaining walls, a lot of the reasons that they're needing that variance today is that just in the last few years, we've, we've put things in the zoning ordinance dealing with retaining walls. Prior to a couple of years ago, maybe even when they initially got this building permit, even though everything was wrong about everything. But, you know, since that time, we've changed some things about our requirements on wall, on retaining walls. Because we were running into, we'd run into a couple of instances, it's different than what this is. We'd run into some instances why we added some things about how far a retaining wall that was a certain height had to be away from a property line. Because we ran into some things specifically on the lake where we had steep areas and we had people putting huge, you know, 30-foot retaining walls right on the property line. And so we, that's, that's one of the reasons we made some of these changes. So some of these requests that they're requesting this evening, these are, some of these are the result, well, the ones that are off the property line, they're off the property line. But most of these, you know, would have possibly even been compliant just even a couple of years ago. So I just kind of wanted to mention that. And I'll just share with you, the staff has looked at this. This is a horrible situation. This is bad for the neighbors. This is bad for everybody, I think, involved with it. You know, I think generally, you know, we've got concern about the reality of how it's going to get resolved. You know, I think like Commissioner Evans was saying, it appears, of course, there's no guarantee. It appears there are people that want to do something, you know, to get it resolved. I mean, our concern as staff is, you know, nothing happens, you know, if you approve this and it dwindles away and nothing happens, you know, that's one thing. If you deny it and then it just sits there, you know, both of those could end up in the same situation where the house is just sitting there for years, you know, because nobody can occupy it. And then eventually you get to a point where the city's trying to force it. But then it's a difficult thing because even though maybe it can't be occupied, there may not be a question necessarily about the safety of the house, if that, if that makes sense. It's, it's maybe not necessarily a structural issue where the house is so dangerous that it's got to be torn down. So then that makes it really difficult for our code enforcement, you know, on looking at that. And then, you know, that's something that could go on for a long period of time. And, 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 you know, I don't want to see, I don't want to see that, that occur as well. And so that's just kind of the, some of the thoughts, you know, from the, and another, another issue that, you know, we were concerned about, we were a little bit concerned about, if you take the existing house and you just start chopping away parts of it, you know, and then able to make it all in full compliance, you know, what could be, end up, could be a real Frankenstein looking, looking thing that might meet the minimum requirements of the planned development, but yet be something, you know, really awkward, you know? So that's a possibility. But the way this driveway and everything is, I don't, if you've been out there, I've been out there. You know, the driveway, it's, it's, it's almost like Whoville. I mean, the driveway is going up to a garage you can't access. And so it's like, it's, it's inaccessible with a vehicle, really getting it up there to utilize, you know, to park up there. It's, it's kind of a really odd situation. So I just kind of wanted to share that from the staff standpoint. This is one we've really scratched our heads out about. And it's been going on, as the resident said, this has been going on, you know, a long time that the codes department's been kind of battling this. And, and I guess the, the bright side of it is, is at least maybe there's an opportunity here to get something, get something resolved. And I just wanted to share, I did talk to staff and, you know, trying to think about being creative, about being, having conditions on a deviation. But I try to get creative with it. I just don't think it'd be proper to have conditions on a, on a deviation. Either it gets a deviation or, you know, or it, or it doesn't, if that, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Hardwick, you're in the queue.
I'm assuming that Wilson Bank and Trust foreclosed on a construction loan and that's how they got this back, which.
That's my, I don't know the, what kind of loan it was, but, but that's my understanding.
They've hired, they've hired you to tell them how to fix the problem so they can get rid of this house. The, with all due respect, making the assumption they have been funding a construction loan, they didn't do their job to make sure it was being built correctly. And quite frankly, that's not our problem, that's theirs. Has the bank talked to the homeowners in that we have a homeowner here tonight saying we shouldn't vote for this? So have they talked to the homeowners to find out what issues the homeowners would be willing to support?
Not, I'm not aware that the bank has. I believe the GC that they've employed might have had some, a couple conversations with a few of the neighbors. But I'm not aware of anybody directly at the bank, no.
And I guess the, the last question that I have, and I fully understand that we don't want to not approve this and it's sat there for years. But if we didn't approve it, the bank's in a, in a tough spot as well. So I don't believe anything really happens between Thanksgiving and New Year's. I would be in favor of deferring this to the January 6th meeting to where the bank can come in and say, if you will approve this for us, we have contracts ready to sign. Work will commence within 30 to 60 days. And while none of that has, can be conditioned upon the approval, we're hearing from the bank explaining to us how they got into this, how they're going to get out of it and make this thing happen.
Sorry, I've been dealing with a cold, but I'm Derek Finn. I have been contacted by the bank to come in as the, the GC here. So clearly there are a lot of issues here. Being the GC, we have met with codes multiple times over, over the last year prior to, to the foreclosure. We are at a point now where we have contracts. Codes suggested to us to have this meeting first. Depending on what this body does today will tell us what those contracts may or may not look like. So the contracts are setting on, you know, are set up, ready to go. And as soon as we have a decision from this body, we are moving forward. The bank is absolutely ready to get this, this completed. We don't, we didn't want to start any demolition or reconstruction until we have these answers. We don't want to, you know, trying to be a good steward of the, the bank, the bank's money in this situation. We felt like this is the first step and that was direction from, from staff as well. So can I assure you a timeline of six months, eight months, you know, four months? I can't, I can't assure that. But what I will say is, we have, we've been in contact with structural engineers because we have seen some of the current concerns that, that are here. And we will do, you know, you know, we're doing everything we can for the bank to be able to get this to completion as soon as possible. There's things, there's items, a list of items that we've worked closely with codes on throughout the, the process. But we, we weren't really able to get in and do as, all of the due diligence until, until the foreclosure happened. And that's, you know, we also couldn't come to this body until that happened. So within, I believe it was a week, maybe two weeks, we had had multiple meetings with, with the city and looking for this resolution. So we are, we are ready to, to move forward as quickly as possible. I know that between Thanksgiving and New Year's, there are, you know, it, it can slow down. There are a lot of things that can be done on this property in that timeframe to get this moving as, as quick as possible. In, I'm not sure who asked the question about, has the bank reached out to, to neighbors? I personally have reached out to a couple of neighbors. I don't know if they're here or not. I know they have not spoken to, tonight. But I have reached out to them. I do know their concerns. And I also have gotten assurance from the bank that they want to be good neighbors. I mean, Wilson Bank and Trust is well-known here and it does them no good to not be a good neighbor. So we will be doing some of those things and I've had those conversations. There's a neighbor across the road that built a, a house to sell. I've had multiple conversations with him. This is a concern. This house has been a concern in him, his selling of the house. I can't remember exactly how many showings he had of that house, but he said every single one of them brought this house as a concern and they didn't know when it would be completed. So yes, we've had conversations with some of the neighbors, not all of the neighbors. I apologize for that. But I, I don't, you know, there, there's this, where this intersection is and this house sits, there are a lot of neighbors around there. So I just wanted to. So I just wanted to address that. Um, and I think that covers everything here for any questions.
Well, I got one comment. I've got two more people in the queue, but you've sort of heard from Commissioner Hardwick, and I'm going to bring another thing up too, and that is, do you have the authority tonight to ask for a deferral on behalf of Wilson Bank? And I think what you're hearing from these people up here is if you have a more defined plan and the bank can come back with more assurances of timelines and what they will do and complete uh on their own accord, I think you may get a more willing group of people up here to work with you. But right now, you're not bringing much other than oops, sorry, and yeah, we have, you know, some assurances, but not many.
And I had a conversation before, you know, on the way here, and the bank uh would like to have a decision tonight to know where, which which direction we're heading. Um, uh, you know, the relationship with time and money, I think, plays into that uh into that decision. Um, so they're, they're trying to get the answers so that they can move forward. Um, that is, that is the, uh, you know, looking at that or hearing that conversation, I think that tells you how serious they are to move forward. They don't want, based on my conversations, they would not want to wait until January sixth for the, for another, a next meeting uh to prolong the uh the decision. Um, but that's, that's really
Okay.
Uh, they they are motivated to get this this to the finish line. Um, and I I I think that they would look at another thirty days as, um, you know, and not having the answers for the, you know, what, not knowing what the the end result in thirty days is. Um.
Okay.
I I do think, you know, the conversations around the aesthetically pleasing and if uh if if these things, if the deviations are not, you know, are not um, not granted, I do, I do feel like this, the aesthetics of the home would be um, would be affected greatly, so.
Understood. Commissioner Kerr.
A couple of questions. You mentioned you have existing contracts to address some of the the issues. Has the bank provided you a budget on what you're supposed to stay within? And would those deviations or those corrections uh fit within sight of a a number that the bank has articulated to you?
I've shared with the bank our 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 bids for what is to be done, and that is, that includes the the retaining walls. Um. We have given estimates on, you know, some of the the deviations if they're not approved. Um, we've given estimates on those, but I I can't make, you know, I I can't make that decision for them once those final numbers are um are are landed on or agreed upon, uh, yeah, and, you know, what those changes are. But yes, we we, they, we have given them uh our our estimates, and they have, they are ready to move forward as soon as, um, you know, as soon as we have this decision. Um, so.
Well, I I mean, I'm certainly in favor of a deferral, and for that reason, you're not able to answer some of the questions I think are relevant um to this, to these issues. I mean, you as a contractor can come in with a wish list of things that need to be fixed, but the bank may say, I'm only going to fund three or four of those. And then the neighbors are sit, sitting with another house for who knows how long. So I I am in favor of a deferral. I I think it would be personally in the bank's best interest to get, uh, at least me and maybe a couple of other commissioners on board, what you're trying to do, so we can understand the impact to the neighborhood. Uh, I don't, I don't, don't take this wrong. I don't care if you make money off of it. I don't care about the time value of money. That's not this, the role of this commission.
Yes, sir.
So um, so that, I would be in favor of a deferral. So I'll leave it at that, so.
Any other commissioners? I saw you were originally in there. Commissioner Hardwick, did your question get answered?
I just want to say, I I really want to vote for this. Uh, and I understand the bank is is so important to them, they can't wait thirty days, but it was not important enough to show up to tell us. So I I'll let that decision way where it is. I I really do want to vote for it.
Yes, sir.
But I really want to hear from the bank as well. So I'll have to decide how I'm going to vote.
Commissioner Wessel.
This is just for point of information, just for my, um, because I don't have the history on this. Uh, does Masquerade Farms, I'm assuming they have an H O A?
Yes, sir.
And within that H O A, did they not have an architectural review committee?
Yes, sir, they did.
And in going through to get to this point, what has the role of an architectural review committee been in this process? Do you know?
Um, so they would have approved the original architecture. Um, I am not aware of an approval or disapproval of the current existing. Um, I would, I would have to to get that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Another reason for deferral.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hasty. All right, any other commissioners have questions?
I agree with Mr. Hardwick. I mean, I'd like to go ahead and vote and get this over with, but
Well, we'll entertain a motion.
I think uh the deferral is probably a good idea and for the, hear from the bank and everything after what I've just been heard.
Well, if uh if one of the committee people would like to offer a motion of deferral, that's fine. If you want to vote it up or down, that's fine. Um, I'm here to entertain any motions y'all have to offer. Commissioner Wessel, you're still lit up. Do you have any other comments?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Do you mind if I s-
You go right ahead.
Clarify one. Um, so understanding, making sure we, when we come back, or if it is deferred, that we are well prepared. Um, my understanding of kind of the things that this body's looking for, um, representative from the bank, uh, clarify the H O A, uh, approval or disapproval of the current architecture. And then, um, I believe Mr. Kerr made a comment, um, uh, I guess, regarding the plan. Is there specifics in the plan that, I guess, uh, so make sure if we need to make changes to the plan or
Yeah, great question. And and let me call, let me just clarify that. I think that the number of deviations that that Caitlin had articulated, uh, what I would like to see, just from understanding the the, how critical some of them are, some of them are not, some that have been rectified, some have not, I'd like a complete list of those and a good definition of each of those. Um, and that would be something that you and the builder or you and the contractor can, you know, give us your best guess on on that. But when when the bank comes, I would like to understand a full scope of what we're dealing with in terms of those that have already been rectified and those that you feel like, in the next meeting you come, I'll ask this question. Do you feel like that you have been given adequate authority and you have the right uh financial means to do the the work that needs to be done to make these corrections? That that will be a question you'll get on January sixth if we defer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hardwick.
I guess to to follow up on what you're saying, if you choose to defer this, yes, we want to know that the homeowners association is willing to approve what you're asking for. Yes, we want to know that staff has approved everything that you're asking for. And what I personally want to hear from the bank is they're prepared to fund it and move forward. I'm willing to vote to give you what you want. I just want to know the bank's prepared to fund it and move on and not pick and choose after the fact.
Again, anyone have a motion you want to throw up?
Can they ask for the deferral or if we ask for it, is is that acceptable? Or do we have to only vote yes or no unless they ask?
Well, I don't think they have the authority to ask for the deferral from what he answered me earlier. So we can offer a deferral if you want to in your motion, or you can have a straight vote up or a straight vote down, whatever you want to do in your motions.
So if we ask for the deferral, do they have to accept it or what, how does that work? Are are we forced to vote yes or no tonight?
That I'm going to let Director Free answer.
Yeah, you can do a couple of different things. Since this is just a deviation, it's not, uh, you know, it's not approval of a plaid or something like that, that that does have a clock ticking on it. And that's when a lot of times we'll want to get uh the applicant to agree to the deferral, so it kind of stops the clock, so that, oh, go right ahead.
I I may just clear this up. I I, we we are asking for a deferral at this point, based on the feedback.
Yeah.
I feel like uh the bank can be comfortable with that and thank you guys for your feedback.
And and I will share this to the applicant from the staff standpoint. Uh, the deferral in this particular situation, this is a positive movement. Uh, you know, that what what I think the planning commission is is telegraphing to you with their interest in a deferral.
Yes.
Is their interest to see a solution, uh, just wanting to have a greater confidence, uh, you know, when they're, when they're casting their vote on it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the applicant that's requesting the deferral. Do I hear a motion? So we have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, we'll do this electronically, so it's on the record.
Thank you.
The deferral will be the next, the next meeting. Thank you all.
Motion to approve applicant's request for deferral to January sixth is approved. Eight yeses.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, next we have staff level projects that are approved. Um, all of these have already been approved by our staff. Anybody got questions about any of them directly? All right, nothing, and we'll skip on ahead. We also have staff level projects pending, uh, several of them there. Are there any questions that anyone has in particular? Anything you've brought up or want to know more about? All right, other than that, we got nothing. So Planning Director comments?
Yes, very briefly. Uh, I'll just remind everybody of their four hour training that uh that Zach had sent. Uh, everyone, we got to make sure that we get that, uh, everybody views that four hour training and we get you signed off uh to meet that certification. That is a, other than for Alderman Martin, uh, that is a requirement uh for all of the planning commissioners and our Board of Zoning Appeals uh as well. So I'm just about finished it. I've just got thirty minutes left. Uh, I've went through that. So it, there, there's a lot of interesting things in there. Uh, so I appreciate, appreciate everybody looking at that. Uh, in in January, uh, at the January meeting, uh, we've already got some items that are going to be on the agenda. We'll have the the T B N that's going to be deferred moving forward. We'll have this item of the deviation that's moving forward. Also, we've got a very exciting project at one twenty Sanders Ferry, a significant project uh there uh with a, with a development uh that's going to be coming, uh, coming before you with the site plan, with a commercial site plan there. So uh we're excited about that. Also, at the January meeting, I'm going to be bringing, I'm going to be putting some information in regards to development impact fees. The Board of Mayor and Alderman are pursuing, we've been working on it uh here throughout this year, but uh here going into uh the end of the year and the first of next year, uh, they're going to start making progress to uh to get that to maybe to a final decision. But as a part of that process, uh, is just, uh, I'll, we'll have enough information by the time of our January meeting, where I'll have that in your packet, and we may put it on the agenda for uh for just at least a brief discussion and at least to get an acknowledgement maybe from the planning commission uh in regards to development impact fees as well. So uh we're going to be hopefully prepared to to be able uh to to do that. Uh, otherwise, Mr. Chairman, that was the only thing I had, but if anyone had any questions, uh, me and the staff are happy to answer anything.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Free. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Got a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, everybody, for being here. We appreciate you.